Thank you.
I'll put it on a few miles.
All right, I have 4:30. Let's call the meeting to order. Roll call.
George Anderson.
Here.
Call.
Here.
Steen.
Here.
Mayor Buck.
Here. Got the agenda in front of you. Pretty much a work session. Look for a motion.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Public comments? Do we have anybody that would like to make some comments to the council? Don't see anyone, so we'll move on. Budget work session. Where are we at?
Well, we sent out the budget, or Christina sent out the budget earlier this week. It's balanced. If you looked, all of the tweaks or changes are in yellow. Some revenues were increased up, you know, for instance, the bank franchise tax, which, as we always caution, who knows where that's coming in at. But looking historically, we're over that. We've been over that for the last couple of years. Other than that, some minor tweaks on the revenue side here and there. On the expense side, the two largest changes, and there's a number of minor ones. The two largest changes were, one, reducing the sidewalk expense repair budget from seventy-five down to fifty thousand until we get a sidewalk plan in place. And then reduce-
You want from a hundred?
Yep. It was seventy-five before the second round. And then the other sec- the next major one was reducing the COLA from nine point one to the July CPI to eight and a half. Other than that, it's just some other-
Few tweaks here and there.
Yeah.
So, on page fifteen for publications, we're dropping that from thirty-five to thirty. Is that just based on what we've spent in the past?
Yeah, I looked at that over the last few years, even projecting, you know, because we're at about fifty-eight percent of expenditure so far this year. We're not going to hit thirty. We're going to be down around twenty-five, twenty-six, and that was with a fifty percent contingency on there.
Do you expect her rates to increase with inflation?
Not, yeah. I expect her rates to increase, but not that significant.
Okay. And then I see that you dropped the contingency from a hundred to seventy-five.
Yep.
You comfortable with that?
Yeah. That's typically what it's been at.
Seventy-five?
Yeah.
Did we gross it up? I, the dropping on the sidewalks, I am against that, I guess. That's a really big park board issue. And we'd like to get those sidewalks in place. What are you, what are you suggesting that we need to do?
This sidewalk is for-
Repairs.
Repairs in like the Slurry Seal area. This isn't in the parks itself. This would be just sidewalk repairs throughout the town. So if there's a trip hazard or something like that, that's what we want.
Well, and I understand that, but sidewalks as a whole, for the whole city, we've got to maintain them, and that's part of the whole sidewalk plan, I guess. Are we thinking we, we are going to do some kind of plan?
We, we need to, as, as expenditures increase and revenues get a little tighter, we can't just throw money at something that we think is what the number is. So, we haven't hit fifty thousand dollars over the last few years. I don't anticipate us hitting fifty thousand dollars next year. So, there's no reason to overbudget into sidewalk until we've got a very definite plan in place as to where that, where that money's going to.
I was thinking we did make a bit of a plan that correlated with the Slurry Seal and curb repairs. I know my neighborhood's all marked up with sidewalks. Wasn't that part of why we were, I guess I don't recall the exact discussion, but I was thinking we wanted to ramp it up to get those fixed. I guess, I guess I would agree. I'm hesitant to, if we have trip hazards out there, I think those are pretty important.
Like I said before, the highest we were at it was thirty thousand in 2020. We haven't touched fifty grand on sidewalk repairs over the last few years until I see a definite plan in place with quantities as to how much we need to. We can't continue to just throw guesses at the wall in the budget. It's getting to the point in time where if there's not a legitimate, I don't want to say legitimate, but a documented reason, we can't just put money in there to put it in there. Until such time as a plan is submitted and we know quantities that we need replaced, then we can, then we have a justifiable figure. But just a guess at seventy-five thousand or it's a hundred thousand, it's not. I've not seen anything that would indicate that.
Are you going to work on that plan?
Yep.
Okay.
In the, in the park budget, there's a change on the professional services. Is that just for, again, based on what we've spent before?
Yes, and the, in the doll- the higher dollars in nineteen and twenty were new Aspen Park master plans. We really haven't spent a lot on professional services unless it's for a plan.
Designs, kind of design stuff?
I thought about decreasing it a little more because we just don't have any plan to spend it in there.
I guess the other question I had was on the general government building. So again, we're, first to kind of go around, we were thinking about five hundred thousand dollars in her, for repairs for City Hall, but now we back that to two fif- or twenty-five thousand. But then we've also put two hundred thousand in designs. Is that correct? Is that what I'm reading right?
Yep, correct.
Correct.
So anticipating roughly two hundred and twenty-five thousand there to kind of-
Anticipating they should still have to keep up the buildings enough so that we can work out of them. And then the two hundred thousand would be to start a design next year to move forward with the new building. Is the understanding that we got from the work sessions.
So what does this CPI come in at?
It's eight and a half for July.
Can you elaborate on what the reductions are in the building inspections for equipment and grease trap inspections? Those both took huge hits. They're small, but huge in comparison to what was, we started with.
Yeah, the grease trap inspections don't have really any, any expenditures. And I did talk to the ones that kind of run that. They don't foresee anything that they would need to get or supplies that they would need. A lot of it's already set up, so it's just kind of their inspections that they do for it. And then the equipment, we are having some troubles with one of the computers this year, so we're going to have to get the equipment this year instead of next year.
We are going to have to get it this year? We took it down from twenty-five hundred to five hundred.
Because we don't need to get it next year.
Yeah, the next year-
We're getting a computer this year, a year ahead of time.
In the, page twenty-three, the equipment for Raleigh's group, we dropped that a little bit.
Yep, again, nothing in particular slated for that. No, no singular piece of equipment.
Didn't you say that Farmer's Almanac said we're going to have more snow this year?
Yep.
We dropped the contract snow. You jinxed us, you know that.
I know.
We haven't, we haven't contracted out for three years.
Quite a while.
Just saying.
That's, that's one area, another thing I think I've said before, it's always a crapshoot. We will continue to plow snow regardless.
Kind of lost our one contract we used all the time now. So we just haven't contracted out.
The last three years we haven't?
The only way I think we probably would is if we need a road grader to hire somebody. If we get ice or something on the roads and we need to hire a road grader, I think would be the only reason why we would probably contract out now.
Anything else? Other questions?
Otherwise, I know I thought, good job getting this thing balanced and, yeah.
It's a lot less painful than it usually is.
Well, like I said last year, with the CIP in place-
It helps a lot.
It takes a lot of the, the stuff out. Because we already know what we're going to be doing a year now or two years from now, so.
Everybody's good. I will get the ordinance ready for the neck, for the first meeting in September, for the first reading on that.
Okay. Good job. Everybody. We are ahead of schedule.
The original email I sent out was five. And then the one I sent out today was, hey, could be a fairly short budget session, so if you want to show up early. Otherwise, I would anticipate you could certainly take a recess.
I think that's what we'll do.
We do have one here. I always thought these should be separate anyway because the ones in the audience sit there and hear the questions.
Can we do that?
Yeah, certainly.
All right.
If that works for Thomas.
Come on up, Thomas.
That was like, we have a candidate for him. I need to talk to him about that. Because I was always, I was the first to ask, yeah, he should rotate.
Okay. Thomas, why don't you start by kind of telling us a little bit about yourself and why you'd like to be on the council?
Well, I grew up in Michigan, which is a couple states over. And worked all my life basically as an electrician, a master electrician and a contractor. I worked for General Motors, retired from there. Went out to California with my wife for sixteen years because her twin sister lived out there. And they moved back here and we followed. It was getting kind of crazy out there. Always was. And, so now I'm here and I've been on the planning and zoning commission for the last year and a half. And I'm looking to serve even more. I served in the Army for three years and hopefully did a good job there. And my whole life has been serving others.
Other questions for?
Thomas, what do you believe are the top two or three focus areas for the city of Brandon currently?
Well, I was at the water plant the other day, and I think one of them's taken care of already. Hopefully for the next fifty years, like they said. Next would be maybe expansion. We were talking about that new school, grade school, wasn't it, off of Chestnut? I would like to see that go up. There's a, in East Brandon, there's a lot of, my being from Ward Three, there's a great need for schools to be there. The kids got to be bused all the way across town to West Brandon. And I would like to see that addressed. Another one, there's a, hmm, a couple of main thoroughfares in Brandon that I can think of, Split Rock and Holly. And I saw a plan that was put forth the other day that I think was approved for the different landscaping. When I was out in the desert, I was in California. I was in a valley, and that valley had a hundred and thirty-one golf courses. It had eleven cities wedged together. The only tumbling apart was the different color of signs. No big buildings whatsoever, but, but the streets were immaculate. There was planting down the middle of the street. There was palm trees and everything on the sides. Everything was just beautiful. I hated to leave that part of it when I moved here. But I'm hoping that this town can be a gem, you know, that people want to come just to see this town.
Okay. Regardless of the outcome of today's appointment, do you plan to run for this seat?
I would like to.
Next year? And Thomas, what two or three qualifications or traits do you believe that Ward Three residents are most looking for out of their representative?
Well, Ward Three, from my contact with a lot of people out there in Collins neighborhood, they, like I said, the school would be one, I think. If I went down the street and asked every one of them, because I see the little kids out on the street playing, I see them all over the place there. We've got one little park over there, besides McCarty Park, but one small sunshine park off of Chestnut. But I would like to see a school where the playground would be open and facilities open for the people of that area, East Brandon. Other than that, I think the people are pretty happy over there that I can tell.
And with the school aside, what do you think the city of Brandon does very well at currently?
Respecting the people. I think the people of this town are here because they, they feel it's clean, safe, and they feel a part of it.
Would there be any topics or people within the city that would pose any conflicts of interest for you?
None one.
From your perspective, how do you think Brandon is seen from people outside of Brandon?
Well, I didn't know much about it before I came here, other than what my brother-in-law and sister-in-law told me. And they gave glowing reports, so we moved here. We can tell by the increase in the population of this town that people want to come here. So it must be seen as a good place to live. Like I said, safe and a good place to raise their families.
And my last question is just to pick your brains on what your thoughts are around Brandon's growth.
Their growth? In order to grow much more, we have to expand. There's some farmland around here that I'm sure the farmers don't want to part with. But to expand much more, say to go from eleven thousand to fifteen thousand, it's going to require either going up or out. And so we got to take that into consideration.
Anybody else have any questions?
I came up with nothing. She's a little smart. I knew she would come with ten of them.
Yeah, good job.
I, I guess I have one, one, Thomas. I think one thing in, in Brandon, of course, that we always struggle with, and actually probably any, any smaller town around Sioux Falls, is, is how do we keep dollars in, in, in Brandon compared to? One of the reasons we moved here is we want to raise our family in a smaller town, but I still needed to be close to Sioux Falls because of my business. But now being in this, this shoes, it's like you really understand the importance of spending money in Brandon. You know, any suggestions that you might have of different ways, again, we can, we can keep dollars in Brandon?
Well, we have a, a small sales tax, and that may not be enough, but it's hard to, to tax people. To keep money in the town, we have to have something that's going to draw them to the town. We're in the process of building that new Brandon ninety out there. That's a good start. I think there's room for another mall or a different type of venue. One thing I see missing, we, my wife and I go out to eat a lot, and we go on Brandon, but we also go over here to southwest Sioux Falls a lot to eat, and even further over on Forty-first Street and stuff. I think there's room for a, a large area for just food venues. Applebee's, you know, better, a little higher class restaurants than what we're used to. I think that would draw people here because they would feel safe. They wouldn't be rushed over on, like I say, Forty-first Street where the traffic is bumper to bumper.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions?
You got to ask something.
Yes. No, you don't have to. It's not a requirement.
But I'm gonna, I'm gonna. So one of the things that we're facing, and, and you see it here in this building, we have the building next door. City Hall, that's going to be a topic of discussion. If you've been around here at all, you may be aware of our public works building that's back over here. Where would that be on a, on a priority list as far as facilities, facility replacement and, which would come at a fairly high price tag?
Well, when you're a kid and you outgrow your clothes, you know it's time to, you know, redo something. With Brandon, we've got a little more room, a few more years before we outgrow what we have here. I think there should be some planning, starting now, as to whether we want to expand in this grounds or take up another set of grounds. It's hard to go up, like they can make a three-story over here or something like that, but you got to tear the whole thing down and start over anyway. So I think we should be looking for something.
Okay. Anybody else have anything? I want to thank you for stepping up, and I want to thank you for your service on the planning and zoning. And I guess Ben becomes a Ford Bruce, so Ben, why don't you come on up?
Sure.
Tell us a little bit about yourself.
Sure. Well, my name's Ben Peterson. I moved here from Sioux Falls about a year ago. We had the opportunity to rehab a house on the east side of the golf course, and I couldn't pass it up. I have, I have a couple friends that live here in Brandon, and they talk greatly about it. And I said, you know what, it's, it's time, let's, let's take a, take a step up. So about myself, I married in 2020, just had a child a little less than a year ago, who's waiting for me at home. I work for a company called McKesson Medical Surgical. I am the vice president of the Great Lakes region. And I don't know what else you want to know about me. I'm an open book. This opportunity was brought up to me by Rachel Neiman, who I'm assuming you all know. She said, I think you'd be a great candidate to be on city council. And I said, why? She said, because you won't BS anyone. You'll tell them exactly how it is. And I think that's, that's kind of what I bring to the table. I don't have a background in public works. I don't have a background in anything political, actually. I have a background in business. I work for a Fortune Eight company, and we run a quarter billion dollar territory. But I don't have your guys' background. But what I do have is an unbiased view. I think that's important, that you, you don't have the burden of maybe growing up here. You can look at things a clear lens where somebody else might not. I provide honest feedback, some candor, and I always want to do what's best for the situation, not necessarily what's best for an agenda, if you will. If that makes sense. I think one of the things I bring to the table is a, in my role right now, is very much a, I have to see a vision. I can't see a transaction. So I can't look five days down the road, I have to look five years. So when I look at a situation, it's always two steps ahead, not how do we put out the fire? And the nice thing for you guys, if you pick me up, is I have longevity in Brandon because I just sunk my life savings into the house, so I'm not going anywhere. I'm here. I guess my, my thoughts for running for city council is I like the involv- the idea of involvement. I don't have that right now, but I love where I live, and I'm, I'm growing to love this community more every day. So I really like the idea of being more involved. This being a short commitment, given the circumstance, is a great opportunity to learn. Something I clearly want to know more about, or I wouldn't be here. And I like to have a voice in the community. You know, if I'm representing Ward Three, having that voice. Given my current role with my company, I like to be that quarterback, so it interests me. I want to be a part of it, and I think I can bring a lot to the table.
Okay.
And Harry's the only one I know, so thank you for stopping by my no longer office because I moved back home.
Regardless of the appointment process today, do you have plans to run in the spring for this seat?
That's a great question. I think I'm leaning more and more towards it. This is all a little new as far as the, the idea, but I wouldn't be scared of running. I, I don't like the idea of politics, running for a seat. I would gladly help out if somebody were to say, hey, would you step in and help out in a situation? I would rather do that. But the more I'm here, the more I like the idea of being a part and doing something to not only help the city, but also be a voice for the city, for the Ward Three.
I love that you said clear lens, so let me put that to the test here. With that clear lens, what do you see as Brandon's top two or three current focus areas?
Well, being super biased because I live out there, a paved road off of, is it Split Rock? I'm trying to think, I'm, I'm not good with the street names.
Aspen?
Chestnut.
Chest, yeah, Chestnut to-
Redwood.
Redwood, yeah. You know what, if I had, if I won that billion dollar power ball, I would have come right to you guys and said, here's a check, pave this damn thing up. I just, I feel like that's a, that's a huge issue. And also, I know the transportation in and out of the new school that is zoned for that area, how it's going to be run, you know. That's something that needs to be looked at as a, kind of a five-year plan or a ten-year plan. It can't be, we want to do it this way because it makes sense right now. It has to be ten years down the road. Is it still going to make sense? Because that area is going to grow and develop. You know, it's not just going to stay the size it is now. You can clearly see how much it's growing now. So I would, I, I think those two- So I would, I, I think those two, that infrastructure of transportation for those kids when that school is in is paramount for the growth of that area because you're going to draw, I mean, once a school, then you're going to draw tons of people in. What are we going to do for infrastructure to house and keep those people happy? So hope that answers your question.
Yep.
Other than that, I've only been here a year, so I think everything Brandon does is great. Other than Houston, he keeps my kid up. I love it, but man, eight o'clock at night and the cars are still going, he's like...
He doesn't know Bullard here.
Well, he does because I got to put him down and he's going to, he's going to tell me how upset he is.
So now factoring in the Brandon School District, what do you think the city of Brandon does really, really well? Besides everything?
Besides everything. What I think Brandon does better than, I lived in South Dakota for a decade, a little over a decade. Brandon does better than any city I've been to is provide a sense of community. I used to live in the Harrisburg School District. I have tons of friends in Harrisburg and Sioux Falls and the, the ability to provide family and community in Brandon is, is just incredible here. Every one of my neighbors that don't have kids still go to the football game, you know, like stuff like that. Yes, small town, right? That happens. I grew up in a small town. But it's, it's very much a, a family oriented city and I really appreciate that.
What two or three qualifications or traits do you believe that Ward Three residents are most looking for out of their representative?
So I wrote this down because I liked your question. Off the cuff, I think they're looking for honesty. They're looking for somebody to fight for what's right for their area. I don't know what, what that would equate to, but they're looking for somebody to, to stick up for them. And they're looking for somebody to communicate with them. Somebody to be able to tell them, this is what's going on and this is why it's important. And sometimes you have to deliver that tough message. Sometimes you have to tell people, we're doing, we're going this route and this is why, and I know it's not what you wanted, but it's what's best for everybody.
Ben, are there any topics or people within the city that would pose any conflicts of interest for you to?
Chuck Parsons. No, I'm kidding. I really like Chuck. No, I, I don't, like I said, I, I met Harry once and I don't know a ton of people here, so when I say I'm coming with a, a clear lens, you know, and open to the scenario, not the situation.
Okay. And from your perspective, how do you think Brandon is seen by people from outside of Brandon?
I think it depends on the demographic you ask. If you ask somebody my age with kids, Brandon is very much a sought after community, you know? We want to live here, they have a great school, a great community. They love the small town feel. You ask somebody that's, you know, out of high school to maybe under 30 and they think, well, Brandon is maybe more of a uppity town and people think they're higher class. I only say that because somebody had said that to me a couple of days ago and I said, that's a, that's a funny take on Brandon because that's exactly the opposite, I would think. But I guess at the end of the day, if you're looking for how it's viewed and you see the number of people moving here and how it's growing, like I personally don't think Brandon can grow fast enough. But I think it's probably one of the better cities in, in the state. If not the best, then I'll be super biased because I live here.
And speaking of growth, what are your thoughts in general around Brandon's growth?
I think the growth in Brandon is inevitable regardless of what anybody in this room, anybody in the Public Works wants. The growth in South Dakota in general is through the roof, so this is a situation where you can't triage. You have to look at, you know, what are the numbers going into it and how can we prep for the next five years? It can't be, what can we do next year? Because next year we will be here and gone and then you will have allocation or you'll have resources allocated to next year's problem and next year's problem isn't next year's problem anymore, it's a five-year problem. So as far as growth goes, you're not slowing it down and nor should you. I would be interested to know how far Sioux Falls is coming towards us and we're going towards them because at some point the two cities will meet. And then Brandon would stifle the growth of Sioux Falls. So is that a conversation that's been had before? I'd like to sit in on that, just to hear what's said. That's just me being a little nerdy though.
Okay, other questions?
So yeah, just kind of give off of what Gabe Thomas. Any ideas or thoughts of, you know, ways that we as a city can keep people spending in Brandon?
I love the idea of expanding options. I would say my biggest plight from moving here a year ago is we don't have options. Sunshine is a fine grocery store. I like the idea of having a couple of options. I do. That's, that's just me being, being me. Fairway coming in is a great move. I really think that's a great move. The I-90 complex, you guys putting a Culvers in, I'm from Wisconsin, so good job, thank you. But the food options, like my wife and I, kid goes down at seven, I call my neighbor's kid, hey, come watch him, watch the monitor, we're going to go out to dinner. We have three options, you know? The more we have for opportunity here, the more people will stay here and the more you have something to diversify yourself for opportunity here will bring people here. So you have a, what, what's the restaurant going in by Arby's? That's, yeah, the attic, right? But it's not the attic. I'm so glad that's not a chain because people will come here for that versus if it is a chain, people will, I have that in Sioux Falls, why would I drive to Brandon? But if it's not something they have access to, they will come here as long as it's good. So that's what I like to see. I, I really enjoy the, the mom and pop idea versus chain. I know chains bring money, but money isn't everything and if you want to keep the people's money in the town, I think you need to diversify that way. And nightlife, I don't go out anymore, I'm a dad, but there's not a lot. I, I think that we could do better in that aspect too.
Okay, other questions?
I have to ask my question.
You heard the question. Did you have a hard time finding City Hall?
Yeah, no. I had a hard time finding this. I walked into City Hall and she goes, next door. I said, okay. I had no idea, but...
Okay, so that's one of the things that we're looking at in our projecting forward is a, a new structure here, new structure for, for Public Works. If you, you'd never be able to find Public Works, but they're right across there and it's underwhelming.
Is it by the bar? I probably could find it.
Pardon?
I said, is it by the bar? I could probably find it.
Across the street and back in the corner in the dark. So we're looking at putting a lot of money into City Hall. I don't know what the perception of, of the people in town here is of those type of facilities. And then there's also discussion about placement of those facilities. Should we build it in the same place that we have, which is kind of a downtown area that's really not a downtown or, or locate it somewhere else? Any thoughts on, on that?
I can't speak to the location. I feel like that's for somebody that's been here and would understand it. I, I like that it's downtown. I really feel like the downtown area here could use a little more. I am, I'm going to tell you, to be honest, I didn't know there was a downtown until about three months ago. I didn't know. So that said, you need to, it's like moving a drugstore off of Main Street. Once you move that off of Main Street, now you lose Main Street, right? So do you want to keep that as part of your town? As far as expansion, investing money, growing what you have here now versus what could be? Brandon is growing. You need to have the facilities to grow with the number of people, right? So it goes back to how fast is it growing? How much, how much revenue is actually coming in? That would warrant what you're trying to do. So do you have a huge audacious goal? Do you have something practical? Do you meet somewhere in the middle? Does it function for what is going to be in five years? And that's, that's where I would start looking is what are your projections? Why do you need it? And does it make economic sense, you know? Are you being, are you looking at it through the lens of a Boy Scout? Are you being thrifty? Because at the end of the day, we're all public servants, right? So you don't need anything flashy, but then again, you need something that would facilitate everything you need to do.
Any other questions?
Just a comment about Culvers, I think we might have some bad news for you on that.
Don't even, I'm out, I'm moving. I know, but damn it, but it's so good. It is. You know what, there's, there's a time and a place for chain. There really is. And I get it. I'm just saying, if you want somebody to come here and you have some type of restaurant that's known for something and it is very good, they're going to come here versus coming to the Arby's. That's my two cents.
Okay.
Thanks for letting me rant. Appreciate it.
Thank you, appreciate you stepping up and, you know, whether or not this works out, I'd encourage you to get involved in
Absolutely.
in things. I'm glad you're here in Brandon and...
Well, I appreciate you guys having me.
All right. Thank you. Bruce Johnson. Come on down.
I'm here.
All right.
Bruce Johnson, I moved to Brandon here in 1988, so Tim was a little kid, well, he was a kid, he wasn't little, but I grew up watching him. I worked at Brandon number for a number of years. I moved out, worked at Eros Data Center for another 13 years and currently I'm at Bethany Meadows, been there about five years, so. All of my jobs have been pretty much budget type jobs. I do accounting now for Bethany. When I was at Eros, I was a project controller, which analyzed budgets. My last one was $50 million budget, we were launching Landsat nine, so been around some budgets. Numbers don't scare me, but from there, I've been a member of Brandon Lutheran Church ever since we moved here, been on church council two terms, Harry was with me on one. It's always a pleasure. But been through some difficult times there and survived that. I've been involved in every, well, not every youth program, but almost all youth programs here in Brandon. Softball, baseball, football, anything that keeps the kids busy. I ran the Cub Scout Program for a number of years here in town, so got the Cub Master of the Year once for that, so been, been around the kids a lot. In Brandon Lutheran, I took three mission trips down to Juarez, Mexico, built houses, basically a glorified lawn shed, but we took a bunch of kids down there and got to witness different style of life and showed kids how good they have it around here, so pretty valuable. But other than that, tried to keep kids out of trouble. That's kind of been my goal, what my kids have grown up through here. Both my kids went through all the school years here. I have seven grandkids within 20 miles, so my roots are going to be here for a long time. Starting to see my grandkids come back into high school, so a lot of city stuff interests me, you know? I said, you guys ask about what you could improve on and that's, that's probably the biggest thing right now is we've got a young community and I see a lot of youth things around this community that are going well and keep, keep doing it, so.
Okay, questions?
Alrighty, so regardless of the outcome from this appointment, do you plan to run for the council seat in the spring?
I'm undecided for that right now because, as I mentioned, my grandkids are getting older and I'm going to get busier and busier. I look at this as an opportunity to help out and try to fill in where needed and see how it goes, see how busy I get with it. And as my kids get more involved, I, I don't want to miss that time either, so for now, I'll do the term that it's needed and then I'll decide, so.
Okay. Bruce, what do you believe are the top two or three focus areas for our city right now?
Well, as I mentioned, a lot of youth in this community. I think traffic control is huge. I mean, I, I take my kids back and forth to school and that middle school is a nightmare and Brandon Lutheran utilized, we let them use our parking lot, which they couldn't do it without that. And I mean, I know they're trying to improve streets and stuff, but a two lane with a turning lane is good there, but I mean, it's, it's just a nightmare to get in and out of that school and I can't believe there aren't more accidents. I mean, that's, that's one that I'm physically involved in because I got to pick my grandkids up there and I see it. Every school we have has a bottleneck and, you know, we built two schools together down here and all comes into one street, basically. It's just, and I know it's not a city problem as much as a school problem, but we got to have the streets capable of handling the traffic coming out of their parking lots and that's, that's, that's an issue and I don't think you can fix that one overnight, but it's got to be something that we have to look for and, you know, as other people mentioned, people come to this town because of our school system and if we don't keep making it safe for the kids, I mean, I don't, you know, I, I don't feel comfortable with this, a young child walking by some of the streets because it's, you know, it's a lot of traffic. But the one thing I do appreciate is the police service around, you know, they're always around when school's going and stuff and they do keep an eye on it, so if that's what we can do right now, that's the best, so. The other thing, we're building a water tower. I mean, I've been here since 88 and water's been an issue from day one. I mean, I live above the golf course, so I'm, I'm truly, we've had to have inline water pumps to get our water up to the golf course because we're higher than the old water tower. So the water tower is a great, great thing in my view. I know that caused a lot of political stuff, so, but I think that was needed and it probably needed 20, 30 years ago, but anything that we can do to keep our utilities flowing is necessary. I mean, joining the Sioux Falls sewer system was huge, I think. We don't have sewer lagoons sitting out irritating the other side of town and, you know, I don't know how you can improve anymore on that other than we'd make our own treatment plant, but that takes a lot of money too. But eventually we're going to have to do something as we get too large to use their system, so I'd say utilities is our big thing coming.
Alrighty. And the school district aside, what do you feel the city does very well at currently?
Well, you know, and I know there was a lot of donated money to our baseball field, things like that. The city has always backed, you know, maintenance of the fields, you know, people chalk and people, you know, I've been involved with that and the city's always had people around. Our parks are maintained pretty well. I mean, I drive by McCarty Park, one day it's flooded and next day it's, you know, people are out there working. I mean, I, I, I think we do a good job and because we're a young community, we need to attract people with parks and recreation and that type of an activity. We do offer, you know, baseball programs, things like that because we have facilities. I mean, it's, we couldn't coach baseball or, you know, coach football if we didn't have a place to practice, so good job.
What two or three qualifications or traits do you believe that the residents in your ward are most looking for out of their representative?
Well, the person that asked me to take this position or apply for this position said that we need somebody level-headed and I, I guess I look at it that way that I, I, you know, I didn't come in with an agenda. I don't have any ideas of what I want to fix or what I want to do, but I'm open-minded enough to, you know, soak it in and make a decision. Harry and I were on church council through the pandemic and we got hit with a lot of tough decisions there, as everybody did, and, you know, we had some heated discussions, but in the end you come out with a good decision and, and that's one quality I think I can have, that, you know, we can talk and talk and we might yell, but we're going to come out with a decision, we're not going to hate each other, so. The other thing would be budget minded. Like I said, I've, I've worked with budgets forever and, you know, I think that's key in any city, that you got to have, you only have so many dollars and can't, can't print any more money, so you got to stay within your budget and, you know, people worry about money and, and, you know, as we talked before, other people said you can only tax them so much, so, you know, we aren't going to raise taxes, we aren't going to, you know, we can't increase sales tax, you can't do stuff like that just to make more money, so what we have in the bank, we can spend and that's what we have to work with, so.
Bruce, would there be any topics or people that would pose any conflicts of interest to you?
None that I can think of.
Okay. And then from your perspective, how do you think Brandon is seen from those outside of Brandon?
You know, I, you know, it's always been called a bedroom community. That's kind of a term that we've adopted here and I, you know, I, I... adopted here, and I, you know, I do agree, because majority of the people drive to Sioux Falls to work, and as other people mentioned, you know, it's easy to stop and pick up food on the way out and that. I think that's kind of a bad name for us, or calls it bedroom community, because we are growing, and as we're getting new development, getting a lot of our own stores, our own, you know, places, that, you know, hopefully that will go away, that we're not the bedroom community, we're Brandon, you know, it's, but other than that, I think our community has always been, you know, a young community, a growing community, and I think that's the good part, that people move here, because we offer a lot of fun things, you know, I mean, it keeps your kids busy, so parents don't have to worry about them so much, so.
Okay. And then, speaking of that growth, what are your thoughts in general on Brandon's growth?
You know, like I said, I've been here since 88, it kind of has gone in spurts, you know, I mean, we grew really fast 10, 15 years ago, and it kind of stalled out, Harrisburg took over, you know, it kind of shifts around Sioux Falls, and it seems like east side of Sioux Falls is growing again, and it's, you know, Brandon's going to grow real fast again here, pretty soon we're building a new school in, you know, by Sioux Falls, and we're going to build a new school out here, and I think that's the key to attract people is to have a good school system. The other thing on the growth side is that we've got a couple industries out here that, you know, is a good thing, and we need to attract more of that. I mean, it's, I drive by Brookings, and every day, it seems like they've got a new industry open up along the interstate. I mean, we've got an interstate, let's use it for attracting some type of corporations and, you know, factories, and you know, I know it's not easy, but we should be able to draw in some tax revenue that way, so.
Yeah, then my question, just the, you know, again, being a quote bedroom community, how do we try to, you know, ideas that we could keep dollars spent in Brandon rather than in Sioux Falls?
You know, again, it's up to the business to offer, you know, a sale, or a, you know, you know, but the biggest problem we have is the workforce in Sioux Falls, so the more things we can offer out here to work, stay-at-home type, another factory, another, you know, a bank, or a, you know, a credit card, anything like that you can get where you can get 100, 200 people working at, they're going to be here, they're not going to, you know, they're going to drive into town to get their groceries, or they're going to pick up, you know, food on the way home from a factory or a business here. So I mean, I, you know, it's not an easy task to attract, you know, Citibank or somebody like that, you know, but it's a, that's, I mean, that's, would keep people home more, and keep them, you know, from driving out of Sioux Falls and picking up groceries, or picking up food for the, you know, meal at night, so that's my thought, is we got to have more opportunity for work here in town, so.
And you heard my question about City Hall facilities themselves and possible location. We're talking about spending a lot of money on something that's not, it's not a park, it's not a school, it's a government building, and what are your thoughts on...
Well, it's a necessity, and I can still smell the smoke here from the old fireman's dance, so. We know what this used to be, but it, we, but we, you know, and I knew where City Hall was, but I had to ask where this was, because, you know, like I say, I thought it was the Fire Hall, you know, the old Fire Hall, but yeah, it's not a typical City Hall. I mean, I grew up Lake Press in a small town, 800, our City Hall is way nicer than that, you know what I mean? You go to these small towns, and they've got a true, you know, county seat, or whatever you want to call it, they've got a nice City Hall, and you know, this building's served its purpose. I can't remember what it was before it was City Hall, but I'm sure it was a hospital or something. But anyhow, we need to have something, and as our city evolves to be this nicer, bigger city, it's part of our growth. I mean, we have to, you know, it's like a water tower we're building, I mean, it, you got to have a facility for, I mean, our utilities people, anybody that's working here's got to have a decent office, you could say. Any other questions? Well, Bruce, thanks for stepping up, and appreciate your interest, and we'll let you know.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Well, the appointment will be on the council agenda for the September 6th council meeting. Any other business that we need to take care of tonight?
Nope.
Make motion to adjourn.
Motion and second to adjourn the meeting. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Good job, guys.